All right. It's, clock says 1:05. I'll give up the gals so everybody knows it's official. This is a budget work session on the market township board. Today's Thursday, October 10th, 2019. And we're going to be talking about public works. I have a lot of notes on water. Would it be objective if we start on water? Or does someone have a, Randy?
If I, if I may, just to kind of kick things off. You have in front of you a budget predicated upon everything being the same as it is this year. Same staffing levels. The only difference is that you have the wages and benefits of the new superintendent of public works, John, opposed to Kurt. So that's the only difference on, on the current budget. And with that, you can see that the impacts basically in terms of the residents are relatively Since John came on board, John Kirk and I have been talking about the structure of the public works operation generally and how it might be reconfigured to better address some of the questions that the board has had in the past. Staff coverage and services to the residents. And we are prepared today to enter into a discussion with you on a comparative type of a basis to see if you would be interested in pursuing a restructuring of that department, which would then generate new pages for your, for your budget. So in a relatively, in a relatively brief format, what, what we're talking about, and John and Kirk can get into much more specifics, and we do have more specifics in terms of how this might work, but what we're talking about in a nutshell is potentially going away from the 10-hour shifts that we have right now because they have not worked for us. They work great for the staff, but they have not worked for us from a coverage standpoint. We find ourselves on Fridays and Mondays in particular, short-staffed and relying more on call-outs and things such as that to address some of the issues we have. What we're talking about is going back to an eight-hour-a-day schedule and adding one, potentially adding one service worker that would give us the ability to be staffed until eight o'clock or 8:30?
Eight P.M.
Until eight o'clock in the evening. Not having to deal with, with calls we do for about three, roughly three hours an hour. So that, that's the thrust of what we're talking about. It would provide, if the board wants to go in this direction, it would provide a higher level of direct oversight of field activities for the crew leader, which might be a slight increase. And it would add one additional, require adding one additional day service worker to provide the coverage level. We think it will reduce overtime costs. We don't have a number. It's going to depend basically on how this all works out, but if the board is interested in going in that direction, we can easily provide you new budget pages that would show that for a comparison. We have, just haven't been to the point yet of being able to do that. And we don't want to waste a lot of time until we knew whether or not you were interested in going in that direction.
Dave, I know you're just jumping on your chair. Go ahead.
Well, Sally, we talked about this for last year, so.
No, actually, I've had it in my budget the last three budget cycles.
It would be nice to hear exactly what kind of a program you got set up as far as what changes you actually intend to make.
Sure.
But not so much as the, the numbers, because I know that some of those are unknowns, but more the structure.
Now, we have not talked to staff about this at all. We wanted to see if the board was even interested in it in terms of, in terms of going in that direction. There would be no loss of compensation for anybody, but the difference would be right now, they have the luxury of having three and four-day weekends, depending on how the schedules fall. That was done on a trial basis, and we've continued that trial basis. And it's just Kirk and I have dealt with this numerous times, and I just don't see it working in our benefit. We end up short-staffed. Like I said, twice a week, every week, we end up short-staffed.
And, you know, I don't know if this is the place to spend a whole work session talking about restructuring. I got, the questions I have with respect to the budget really aren't.
Aren't payroll, yeah.
Yeah.
Mine too.
Right.
But, well, let's see what they've got still part of.
Yeah, just to give you an idea in terms of going forward.
Because they still need direction on whether to continue.
Well, and it may impact some of the questions that you have on budget as well. Tom?
Yes, John, go ahead.
I'm, 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 this is fine what we're going to do right now, but it seems to me like the first thing we need to do is the board is to say pretty much what Dave has We are, this is something that has been considered time and time again. This is something that we would like somebody to tailor to a proper presentation. Why don't we just give our, a consensus of the board that we're, we're in total support in the spirit of what's presented. Is that good enough?
Yeah, we just didn't want the board to go forward in the budget process, you know, until we knew where you wanted to go in terms of the change. But, you know, it's not going to affect operations other than the wages and benefits side of it. You know, the rest of projects and everything else should remain essentially the same.
Well, I think that's, that's pretty much it. The wages and benefits portion of the budget is, it is what it is.
Yeah, all expenses and revenue is not going to change that much in that.
Shouldn't.
Hopefully, we're going to save some overtime on that, too.
Right, and again, we can't predict what that would be, but we anticipate that there will, just based on when the calls, you know, when those kinds of services are coming, you know, and for what they're coming for. Primarily revolving around grinder pumps or their intrusion alarms.
I, for one, would just, just assume you went away with that and brought back a fully hatch plan.
Okay.
And go ahead and develop a way because everybody was looking in the same direction anyway.
Yeah, we have been talking about this for a while.
Would this be a rotating shift?
That would be part of the plan. We haven't discussed how frequently it would rotate yet, but that would be part of the process.
Just give us the 40-foot level. Just give us a conceptual.
So you can move that microphone closer to us.
Just a rough idea how.
What we're looking at is two shifts of up to three service workers per shift that would overlap the middle four hours of the day. So you have peak staffing during the peak part of the day, after your morning lull, before the afternoon lull. So you, you have at least six service workers on for half of, half of one normal shift. And then the overlap comes with the well operator and crew leader, basically providing the oversight other than the first hour of the day for the, the majority of the first shift, and then here through the afternoon meal break for the second shift. That way, they go into the final part of their day with instructions from the person in charge before they leave at the end of their shift.
And is there somebody that's just static that's, that's there?
Correct. That would be the green column, which is currently set up as the well operator and crew leader. So there's two people in, on that. Eight, eight, no, 7:00 A.M. to, I'm sorry, 8:00 A.M. to 4:30 P.M. shift.
That's the current proposal, but right now, the crew leader that, that we have, who's actually just retired, is actually on one of the 410 shifts. So not a five-day-a-week, eight-hour-a-day.
This would provide that oversight five days a week.
Well, I think that they said is, what we're talking about is dollars and cents right now in that.
Yep.
This is something else that really isn't going to affect a lot of dollars, I don't think. It affects his manpower.
And it affects service to the residents, basically.
Yeah.
More so.
And I think if you come back with a more in-depth, we'll move on at that point in time, because you're not going to have much dollar changes in that, so.
Budget-wise, no. You know, because as I said, we really, there's not any way that we could predict what the overtime impact is going to be, and it varies every day. So, but our anticipation is that if there, if there is an increased cost as a result of this, it's not going to be significant to the residents.
The only significant is adding one extra.
Correct. And is that the cost of adding that one, that one position spread over water, wastewater, solid waste.
I would, I would think something like this would be a work session apart from budget for the whole presentation. One, I think, one to three presentations would be fine.
Sweet. All right, we can do that.
Yes, we have that blessing.
Good. All right.
Go for it.
That's good. It's got to be, it's got to have some kind of an impact, and overtime right now is out of control.
Yeah, we have, we have not spoken with, I tried to reach out to the, the avenue representative, but as it sits right now, Joe, who just retired, was our, was our lead, you know, our chapter, chairperson, Lenny, who was second-in-command, is out of the country until next Wednesday. But we didn't want to wait too much longer before at least bringing it to your attention to see whether or not we're spinning our wheels, or if you'd like to see it developed further.
Is, is this something that could be prohibited or roadblock by union decisions? Or is this just something you'd like their buying on?
Well, there's a couple of things. You know, board buy-in, for one thing, because you guys are, you know, the deciders. You have the contract, you have the ability to modify schedules and work, work times, your management rates.
It's something, it's something if you decide to do it, that you can do it and stay within the guidelines of the contract that you're in.
Yes, and we would like, we would like to have a special conference with bargaining here, sit down and talk with them about it, but like I said, you know, Joe's gone, Lenny's out of the country, the dragon old John Thompson haven't had success with that as yet. But we wanted to, yet your input today is once we had a budget session scheduled to see if you're even interested in going in that direction, so it's an option. So I think we have our, I think we have our direction to, our authority to further develop it.
So we still just need six people, right? In addition to the superintendent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can add one. I think that's going to be in the work session. We'll get that all laid out at that point in time.
Okay.
Good.
Sounds good.
All right, so with regard to the budget, and you have it currently in your, your packet, the indication is that you have questions, so let's just jump right into your questions and address those and go from there.
Start with water.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just because I have more there. Dave, do you want to? Mine are usually the same as yours.
I don't know why you're picking on me.
Because you had some to.
I have some more, some general questions.
That's all right.
I see a budget definition question, and I'll tell you before you say that, I don't have the numbers for that, so don't question me in the numbers.
The count numbers?
Numbers on what?
No, for the, what the 5% of the budget is and such.
Oh, no, that's not my question. My question is, we're doing water, right?
Yes.
Page 591-5. And it's department 891.
That's six in my book.
I'm sorry, it's 891-6.
Okay.
Replace.
I've got a few highlighted, there are two of them.
On 591-5?
It's 591-6.
Oh.
And it has a department.
891.
And it's under the replacement improvement, that's a department, account number 955 miscellaneous. It was discussed last year, and it's here again. It's, it's an entire department with one account under it, miscellaneous, and it has $261,906 in it. And according to the definitions that was accepted, approved back on July 16th, I believe it was, it says miscellaneous count will not exceed 5% of the budget for wage water or water funds or associated department. So I'm wondering why that account represents 100% of its associated department.
Well, that's the lowest question, but I will tell you what my opinion is, you know, what I'm trying to do here. What that is, is replacement improvement, which are two different numbers. They just have to be categorized, and it's not just miscellaneous, okay? It is called replacement improvement miscellaneous, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I've got a separate sheet for replacement, which is basically replacing something you already have. The improvements would be stuff that usually generates some more discussion, but that's improvements we make, extensions and improvements to the systems.
Improvements are categorized as CIPs?
Yes.
Okay. That's my other question. And it has to do with the approved CIPs from the water fund. And that is, we're in the back of the water department. And the last budget session, there were approved CIPs and there were specifically not approved CIPs.
Right.
And I'm curious why underwater improvements, number six is there, the eight-inch main and PRV of Brookton, because it is, was not an approved CIP, so I'm wondering why it's even in the list. Doesn't matter if we're funding it or not, it's, it's in the list. It should be resubmitted if it was not approved, it was specifically not approved.
Right. And what I have included here is what was approved last year, okay? So the 2019, certain things were approved, right? Nothing else was approved, but you are approving the funding year by year, right? So that doesn't mean that the funding, future funding goes away.
It certainly does. In my opinion, it certainly does. The CIP itself was not approved, which means that if you want to proceed with a CIP to cover that same project, that it needs to be resubmitted with new documentation justification and needs to be considered on, on the new merits.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm legally required to have a 20-year CIP. Okay, that's, I have to do that for public utilities. It's no different than the planning commission or the township. You don't approve your master plan year by year, do you? You've got to have a plan. And each time you proceed with any step of your plan, you've got to come back and get approval, but you've got to have a plan. I can't just live.
Okay, I'm not sure why that's in the plan because it was not approved.
Well, if you don't approve it, you don't approve it, but I'm just telling you, I'm required to have it.
And in fact, we didn't approve it. Last year's budget session, we did not approve it.
Well, and today, I'm, I'm asking you to approve the, the 20-year plan, although that's going to be a, a write-up to this department, but I'm asking for 2019, or 2020, I mean.
Well, that's, I guess where I'm not fine following our conversation is, if, if that's going to be part of a capital improvement program, then it should be an approved CIP, and it's not. So I just don't know why it ends up on the list.
So we need to do one of the two things. We either need to have all of the improvements on the list so we know what the projects are coming forward, or not have them on if they're not approved for this year.
That's my point. We do have all the approved CIPs on the list. And in the water department, there are three of them. The motor control center, the ATS generator, and the, the upgrade to the, to the PLC. The rest of the water department proposed CIPs for last year were not approved, and I was emotion to specifically not approve them. So they shouldn't appear on a water improvements list, and they shouldn't be part of any 20-year.
They could be part of the list for future improvements, but he's saying is this, he's not even asking for the money this year.
Doesn't matter if he asks for the money this year or not.
This is his improvement list, it's not the CIP. It's just an improvement list.
We're talking over details, that's what we're talking.
No, it's not a detail.
No, it's not.
This was specifically not approved.
I know what you're saying.
Based, based on the way it was submitted, when it was considered. So if it was specifically not approved, then it needs to be resubmitted before it can be considered.
It's not in the budget. It's, this is just an information, speak, tell me if I'm wrong. This is just an information, just like the next page of water purchases.
So in other words, we're still planning on doing this? It's just a matter of talking the board into approving?
He's got numbers here for 21.
Why?
Because this is part of his, these are improvements that he's saying.
Because I'm required to do that, Dave.
That need to be done. If it gets pushed off.
If you don't approve it, you don't approve it, but that doesn't mean.
It gets pushed off.
And I guess that's my point.
This is just a list, right?
This board said that the eight-inch main and PRV in Brookton is not an approved, is not a project we want to move forward with.
At this time.
We never said at this time, we said it is not approved.
He doesn't have it in this year's budget. This is just a list, right?
I understand.
This is just a list of water improvements, and you're showing the breakout of the amortization and what we have so far. Are there others? I mean, because we had a list of more than this before, aren't we?
There's a, there's a whole other list under wastewater that are sitting there that were specifically not approved.
Right.
But there they are.
As long as it's not in this budget, it's not to be considered. This is stuff that's falling into different years.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I'm saying that the whole concept of this project was not approved.
Fine. It's not for discussion this year, it's not in the budget. Don't worry about it then, don't worry about it next year.
It's not a matter of don't worry about it then, it's a matter of it was not approved, so why is it there at all?
It's on a list.
Oh, why do we have a list of non-approved projects sitting in front of us?
Because this, he just told you, because this is stuff that has to be done.
According to whom?
His master plan.
And the DEQ.
DEQ's master plan. And I think that's where we're running into issues here. This township has already adopted 25-year master plan for water and for wastewater. Included in that plan is a requirement that you plan for future growth and development over that 25-year period, and that's what Kirk is saying. He has an obligation to build a plan of what that encompasses. The board decides when you fund it, but what he's tracking here is how much are you going to have to fund if you defer it for 10 years?
And how long does it take?
15 years or whatever, this is what you're going to have to come up with to get it done within that 25-year master plan project. Now, maybe the budget's not the appropriate place to track that, and maybe, maybe it should be tracked under the miscellaneous pages, like some of the other depth that we have, things such as that. And the intention is, is to keep the board advised of you have a plan in place, it had been adopted. You didn't adopt it, but prior boards adopted it. And you're incurring that debt because you are going to be required to build that infrastructure in that 25-year master plan. I mean, that's, that's the objective for water and wastewater under the DEQ agreement that we have. So it's a contract in essence, and that's where your ordinance came from. But in any event, it, and it may not be the appropriate place in here, because I hear what Dave is saying. Dave was saying, I guess you got two questions. Is that a capital improvement? Is the first question. If it's something you're already committed to do, is that a capital improvement? You have to fund it. It's not like buying a fire truck. You don't have to do that. Contract with somebody else to do it. And then the second question is, where is it most effective or most expedient or, or most logical to maintain that data? Maybe it's under the miscellaneous pages, just saying, future projects pursuant to 25-year master plan, laid out over that 25-year period so you can track where you are. If it's been 10 years ago, okay, you're now at the 10-year point, and you've got 10 years' worth of accrual that you need to deal with. Maybe that would solve some of the confusion.
It doesn't get lost, too.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess there should be a bigger question answered. Is that really a capital improvement plan?
I don't.
It's not like buying a generator.
Is it an item for the capital improvement, is that what you mean?
Well.
Or consideration?
If it's as part of your master plan, your 25-year master plan, does it need to be resubmitted every budget cycle as a, as a new capital improvement plan? It's a, it's something you've already agreed to. It's not like, it's not like me coming back saying, all right, our generator over at the fire department is eight years old, and we're going to have to plan for, it's got a life of 15 years, so over the next seven years, here we are, capital improvement plan to pay for that replacement. I don't know that infrastructure underground is a capital improvement.
That was my exact discussion last year when we started all of this with MTA and their attorney, and trying to figure out, remember, and then the second call, we got her on the phone, Catherine?
Yeah.
And we were trying to figure out what is required and what isn't, and what flexibility do we have to do these projects? Are they capital improvement? They're considered capital by, I suppose, the ordinance or the DEQ because they are part of the infrastructure of the community, but are they like buying a truck? And that was my argument with her. That, to me, a truck or a generator or something is a capital improvement type, that's probably, truck is probably not a good one, but.
Kind of.
Because it's a huger, a huger expense, yeah. Bigger expense. It's, this stuff is required to do. Just because we don't budget it in and do it this year doesn't mean it's not part of the capital improvement, is what Catherine was trying to say. It all has to fall, however we structure it internally to report it or track it or budget it, that's up to us. But I, I have said at the beginning, this is not capital improvements in my mind. This is required stuff that we need to figure out when and how we're going to do it. Capital improvement is something that we need to include in the budget for this year. What are we going to focus on? This, this is extraneous.
We had a discussion last spring, this spring, about capital improvement programs. And the discussion was that once a capital improvement item is approved, it doesn't have to be resubmitted every year unless it's changed or altered. And that was at the same time we decided that these capital improvement programs were not approved. But they appear on the sheet, and I don't care where else you want to keep them, but they shouldn't be confused as being some kind of a, this, this suggests that we're obligated in, in the way this goes in 2021, to start funding the eight-inch main on Brookton Road.
And if we do the budget for 21 and we put it off, then it moves. He's telling us that this project has to be done at some point. If you want to call it a CIP or not, it doesn't make any difference, or what sheet you put it.
Well, it does make a difference.
Well, because I don't agree with the definition of CIP.
One is, one is in the master plan, and master plans are just that, that's what you, where you see the township going in the next 25 years. And master plans are subject to change and subject to amendments.
Some, because some of it's controlled by the state, too.
Well, it can't change, I mean, as things change, I mean, it's based on, I mean, actually, planning is, is part of our master plan. So in other words, what we're, what we're planning for is how are we going to meet the modern sewer needs of the township based on what the planning commission determines the zoning is going to be, what kind of development are they, okay? So we're looking at that. We also, you know, the planner's part of that in terms of what has been the growth, what do you anticipate the growth is going to be? So you come up with some number, okay, for all these established districts, and some of them, maybe there's no service at all there yet, so that's going to have to be actually served.
If, if.
And so every time we go in for a permit, which we have to do any time we're constructing anything, if it's not part of your master plan, it's not going to get approved.
If the priorities of the township change.
Right.
As they have changed over the last four or five years, I'm submitting phase two of the water project. That's been shelved indefinitely. As the priorities of the township change, the master plan needs to eventually reflect that change, or what good is the master plan?
The phase-two project is not something the DEQ is requiring us to do. That's different. That's a different type of, you can't use that as an example. Who's salivating over here?
I agree with Dave in that. When I looked at this, okay, we got, really, we got six projects we're working on, and looking at the dollar amounts here. But as you said, we, we didn't really approve number six here, the eight-inch. So I'm looking at this, changing the heading, leave the water improvement for one, four, and five. Give a total on that, drop down like future water improvements per DEU crew master plan, something like that, so we know it's coming in.
You could change that whole sheet to say approved CIPs.
One or the other, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, can I?
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is going to clarify, make it more confusing, but whatever included in this year's budget, or 2020 budget, is 38,000 hours, okay? So that's a motor control center and a PLC updating that upgrades. You all, you've approved those two items, right? And the third item you've approved was a generator, okay, which was on last year's list, and I'm not putting it on this year's list because I'm working on that right now. And even next year, I will not be able to complete, if I'm only budgeting 28,000, okay? That's not going to cover it for the motor control center.
I understand that.
Okay. So I'm not presenting anything that's not approved. Anything beyond 20, actually, the motor control center goes, is going to go into 2021.
Right, and as long as that, as long as that stays the same and you don't change what you're going to. Right, and as long as that, as long as that stays the same and you don't change what you're going to do, you don't have to resubmit that again for approval. It just, it's there and it's been approved or it's going to be funded.
And I'm only here today to submit the 2021 budget, which is $38,000. Thirty-four thousand dollars.
John's got a question, though.
Let's see, hang on. Let's ask this John first, in case he's got.
What I'm hearing is a hangup over whether or not that Item Six line should be grouped together with the other three projects that were previously approved. I agree with Kirk in that we, we as department directors, superintendents, whatever you want to call us, need to keep an eye on upcoming CIP-type projects because we're required to. So showing it to you, whether you've previously approved it or not, I think is a good idea. Why don't we just separate it out into its own chart, saying, future proposed projects? And then it's up to the board whether or not you decide to fund it in the future. I mean, that's, that's how CIPs work. We propose a CIP. You can approve the CIP even if you never intend to actually fund a portion of it. Just because with seven opinions, you might never get full agreement on every project in there. But you might have to concede that, okay, that one's going to stay because the one I want to see in there is staying. So I don't want to discount what Kirk, Kirk is suggesting here in that, yeah, you haven't approved that line, but it is still in CIP, so we should show it in there. And if you keep rejecting the funding in future years, it just gets delayed further and further out. That's the way it works.
Well, I would think that would appear in two spots. I would think the, the approved CIPs with that sheet name would change to approved CIPs for the water department. And the bottom ones, if they appear in the master plan, then they should appear under a sheet that says master plan forecast improvements.
You could very easily do it on a single sheet, so you can keep track of everything, just by taking that number six, changing the, changing the subject from project name to approved project name, and list the three that are on there, and then below that have a separate one saying pending future projects. So, you know, and then you put the eight-inch PRV down with anticipated costs in those other years, but they're not approved yet.
And I think you, you want to show at least five years' worth of projects in that future pending, because we always have that short-term CIP we're looking at, trying to get into the schedule and all that.
Would that solve, David, that address your question? If it was laid out that way?
Yeah, I just think it needs to be removed out of there because it looks like it's, it's been approved CIP. And in fact, it hasn't. It doesn't matter if it's for this year funding or not.
If you want to change the title of this to CIP water improvements, then we can do that, too.
Well, you can just leave it water improvements, basically, and have the first word says project name, just have that be approved project name. And then if you go down, you know, a space basically, or a line, and put, put.
Future.
Put future not yet approved, and list it those, so you have a, you have in front of you, you have a list of what you could expect to be seeing in future CIP projects.
With maybe just a dollar mountain, not the amortization even.
Well, like John says, you want to, you know, show it out in five years, for how long, if it's a five-year duration, how long, what it's going to cost you each of those five years, just so you have an idea of future budget needs and what you might be looking at. I think it's important to keep that information together in one place, so you, so you can look and, and have a feel as you're approving projects. Well, you know, yeah, okay, the eight-inch water main is good, but we've decided we're going to go forward with Phase Two of the water project. So that needs to be added on here. And then you decide what you're going to do, when you're going to do it. And then for futures, John is going to have to come to you in futures and say, all right, if this is on the, on the pending future list, we think we need to start it now. Here's the CIP request.
That would be right. John, what have you got? Sorry.
I'm convinced the issue is now resolved. We could leave it just the way it is. What I'm hearing is if we're not prepared to today adopt it and revise the master plan, then we should just, just make a move to make it more clear in the budget as it has been suggested and forget it. I don't think we need to put any more time on it.
And that's all I'm suggesting. If it's not approved, then it shouldn't be in the budget. And the, and I think some serious.
I'm not putting anything in the budget, then that's not being approved by everybody and his brother.
To those projects that are in the master plan that, we need to take a look at those to see what, I mean, the direction of the township has changed. What are we going to move forward and what do we need to change in the master plan?
Do we have Items Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, however many?
Yeah, they, yes. They came off the list. Either they were accomplished or.
Yeah, so we need to.
You guys took them off the list.
We need to have a list of what would be in the master plan that should be considered, whether it's on this page or a different page, doesn't matter, what's going to be coming up. Because we can't just look four or five years out. If we know that there's a huge project, we need to know what they are. Whether the, see, in my mind, Phase Two is not part of this because, I mean, that's as an example I'm giving you. Because that's something we think we would want to do or it has been suggested. This should be stuff that we need to get accomplished based on whatever planning is decided.
And that's, that's.
And demands of the public.
Saying is, is this is CIP. These are approved. If we have items in the master plan that are forecast to be done over the next 25 or whatever years, then they need to be on a separate list someplace with a forecast of what it's going to cost us to do that.
What the projected cost.
When you've got that list, then you can take a look at it as a board and say, we need to update the master plan because some of these are not going to happen. Then you can go back and revisit the master plan and change it.
Because there might be more to add, too, as we've gone on.
There might be. You never know.
So I can associate on the same sheet.
Well, actually, I put that in my narrative.
Yeah.
Okay, our future CIP is going to be $4.6 million, which is Phase Two, the water project. Which is in my master plan, it might not be in yours, but we do need more water capacity.
So if we have the rest of those improvement recommendations on the same sheet, I think that needs to be together. And just move Brooklyn down.
Move Six down.
Yeah, and if there are more that need to be on there, if you, if you believe Two should be on there, then put it on there.
Whatever's in the master plan that hasn't been done yet should be on there.
Yeah, and hopefully it'll fit on one page.
But identified as, as future plan and not yet approved, not yet funded.
Right.
How do you want to pursue that?
According to Dave, they're not even approved.
That's an easy one.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
That's an easy alteration, structure. It's just a structural change. Okay? But again, in your, in narrative, Kirk or John, you know, whoever's doing the narrative, still need to identify that, that future projects are identified on such and such page for consider, board's consideration and ranking. I mean, there may come a time when DEQ or somebody else comes out with a, with a grant, similar to what happened with the generator that just recently come out with potential grant program. Well, that puts it up to the front, and you have to take action at that point to potentially capture that grant. You know, and that may change your, your structure to bump something else off of the current budget and insert that in the budget.
Which, which comes full circle to us assigning numbers, account numbers, to these projects when we fund them. So that if we choose to take the motor control center, we're not going to fund the next 56,000. We want to take it out and put it toward that project. We've got it documented. Right? Because that's what we were talking about, is having that identification. To make us more accountable and to make it clearer for the public or whoever's looking at this. If we're going to move money from one project and, or a future project to another, we've got it documented.
And, you know, the other thing is, is I don't think I really got an answer on, on the replacement and approval miscellaneous account. I understand there's more things under there, but according to definition that was approved.
I didn't understand that either. I put an arrow by it.
It says you can't have more than 5% under that.
Well, that's the lowest question.
Oh, I have the different top numbers.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if you have to break them out and apply them to different projects, then you have to break them out and apply them to different projects other than miscellaneous.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll change those three miscellaneous on 591, too.
So we can just itemize them, basically? Is that what you're saying? You have, you have the miscellaneous broken down?
What we need to do is change the name of the damn thing.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Which I've done many times, actually. I make a fiscal change on the spreadsheet to the name, because I know it upsets you guys. But guess what? It reappears. It's like magic.
So we'll, we'll change that up in the next, next row of sheets that we got.
Okay.
And I've got one more for the water department.
Okay, go ahead.
I actually have two more. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
591.
Use some that we've got, too.
Twelve. And it goes under the fact that we're still using, I know a couple, at least a year or so or better ago, we decided that 50 years was not an acceptable useful life for some of these infrastructures. And I see that we're still using it.
Right, this is still basically the auditor's depreciation schedule.
Right.
And the, the, the AMP is not complete yet. So that's, that's part we're working on. So this is going to change.
What concerns me is that when the AMP is done.
Yes.
The 50 years is going to rear its ugly head again and, and be in there.
No, it won't.
What the board decided was 75 years was more realistic.
Actually, 70 years is what we're going to use in the AMP.
Excuse me?
We're going to use the 70-year number in the project that we're working on right now that's not complete yet. And actually, I think it's, it's probably going to go even higher.
Then I'm back to why isn't, instead of 50 years, why doesn't it say 75?
Because this is all I got right now.
It's not finished.
Okay.
So actually, what you're saying is useful life isn't the accurate terminology, but that's the depreciable life.
This is, this is kind of a universal, every auditor uses.
But it's actually depreciable life, right? Depreciable life, life.
That's what it is, right.
So maybe that should say depreciable life other than useful life.
I thought we'd asked last year that this said depreciation instead.
Well, we did. We, we, we said that that wasn't a, useful life was not 50 years. It was actually more than that, and that needed to be changed.
Okay, so what do you want to see on here, then?
Well, I would think we would either change those 50 years to 75 years, or we would change the heading to depreciable life.
Until we finish the, the AMP, I would suggest we do depreciable life, and then once we have the AMP done, we can change it. Do whatever the actual calculation is, whether 70, 75, you know, whatever.
Right, and that's what's going to be happening. That's, again, I put that in my narrative. It will change when we're finished. And it won't be just the mains either. The other parts will change as well.
Everything valves, everything's going to change.
I keep thinking of this, this asset management program. When it shows up, we're going to be locked into another contract with the state, and we haven't even reviewed it yet.
But right now, it's only under review by the state.
I was going to say, one review to wait.
But once they approve it, are we stuck with it, whatever it says?
No, it's got to come back to, it's got to come back to you, but it has to meet their criteria in terms of how it's being addressed. And that's what they're reviewing right now, is whether it meets all of their criteria. And if it does, then it comes back to us for repliement. It comes to you for adoption. You adopted it. Am I correct on that? The asset management plan? Once the board adopts it, it gets filed with the state.
My, my last question is on 59115. It's the retained earnings summary. And my question is, is that same information available for restricted funds?
That's the lowest question.
For restricted funds?
That's an earning question.
Yeah, there you go.
That's under the treasure restricted funds.
Where I bought it.
But Dave was asking on page 59115, it's retained earnings, but there's no reflection on what's restricted in those retained earnings. That comes on your reports.
Yes, that comes on the monthly report that I give you. You want it in here? We can put it in here if you want, too.
Yeah, it'd be easier if it was in there.
Sure, I can add that.
We couldn't do that.
Okay, so another column, if you want your restricted.
Yeah. Because that's, you get that every month in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yours is more confusing.
It's because I want him to break it out, identify a little bit more.
Okay, so you'll add a column on 15, 59115, so you have restricted amounts.
For both water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater.
Yeah, all of that.
It's there. It's just a matter of putting it in.
Yeah.
I had no doubt it was there.
Yeah.
I didn't spend it yet, because you know.
That's some of my heart today.
Because you're restricted.
I'm restricted.
Well, you, you are spending it. That's why it's restricted.
Understood.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay.
You're up next.
What I did is I went through the narrative, and I asked, and this is probably more for Lois because she's going to be changing it, I'm sure, or not. Planning Department gives a nice narrative. It's got the account numbers. It'd be nice to have all, all of the departments be the same, the format be the same, instead of, fire is one way and water's written another, and planning is written another. I don't care what the format is, but I would like to see, if we look to planning. Let me see if I can find a page for you.
General plan?
Yeah.
1019?
Nine, okay. He's got the account number and he's got narrative. Next to the account number, I would like to see, in this case, the supply account is $3,000 and there's no increase. And I think that would be easy enough to write on there or type in there.
Do you want to see every line item regardless of whether they're changed or not?
If you're trying to analyze the budget, you've got to constantly go back and forth from the budget to the narrative. And there's, if, if you have the numbers to look at, then you can go back to the actual budget. So on 10110, there's no increases for the most part. So next to contracted services, he puts 3,000, no increase. Attorney services, 8,500, no increase. Dues and subscriptions, 2,000, no increase, all the way down. Then he gets down to printing and supplies, $2,500 to $3,000. It may seem, if you're trying to absorb this whole budget, it's, I just really get tired of having the pages out and trying to compare. This gives you such a clear picture of what he's asking. So on, he's only asking for a $500 increase in his whole budget. It tells you that right there, if you just glance through all those pages, if the numbers are there. In Kirk's budget, it's, there's significant numbers. And when you're looking down that, those columns, you've got $600 in one account. He's not showing that, but it's a $600 increase. You've got a $60,000 increase in debt service fee. You've got $500 in fines and forfeits. It's so much easier to look down and say, this is where the increases and decreases are coming in. Then you can go back and look at the pages themselves. And I think if the whole budget were structured that way, it would save some time. Because we're constantly flipping, you know, looking at this, and I have to pull it out because we're talking about two different things. If it's all in the narrative, it makes it much clearer to, to absorb and to analyze. We've got $5,000 loss in other revenue for Kirk. You know, that, those kinds of things jump out at you. Travel's not changing, printing and polishing's going up 100 bucks. Insurance, it says anticipated increase. It's actually $600 less by his numbers. Even salaries are actually only going up about 150 bucks in customer accounts. It's just.
Well, but again, that's, that's, those are only statutory increases. It's going to be more than that when it's actually done. But I mean, that, that gives a misleading impression.
It does, but at least, we know that. But at least it's telling you, master water meters from 850 to 2850, why is he adding $2,000? There's nothing in the narratives that says that. Do you see what I'm trying to accomplish? It's a clear way, water reservoir, 7,700 to 9,750? It's like, what? If we've got those numbers right in front of us, this says the employee benefits are dropping, $17,000. We need another 1,500 for the Cox water pumping station. We need another fifteen hundred for the Cox water pumping station. I can see this all right here, and the narrative should say, the seventeen hundred dollar increase is due to blah blah blah, or the decrease is due to blah blah blah. The Northwoods water pumping station's going down fifty bucks, why is that? You know, one of the biggest things that we have argued about for years with the public works department is why is this stuff happening? And I think this is a perfect example of how this would make it clearer for us, and the explanation all in the narrative. We shouldn't even have to go back to the actual budget and look at it. I mean, you ask for history, or the totals, that kind of thing, but the narrative should be totally comprehensive, and I had to do this for one of Rudger's companies years and years ago, and it just made the process so much easier. Yes, Dave?
That was one of my general comments, too, is, and I agree with what you're saying there. You go through, and there's always a description of what the account is, but there should be another paragraph under that account that addresses increases, either says no change, or addresses increases or decreases.
And why are you decreasing it anyway, too? It's not just the increases.
You should address it.
The narrative should say, what's happening in that account? It should give you the dollar number, what's gonna happen to it, and why the change.
Because I've said that straight along, if you get away from the narrative, everything that's behind it is simply the supporting documentation to explain what's in the narrative.
Same thing with fire. His is the most nebulous, and I know Dan's just following whatever was done before, which is fine, but it's very, equipment replacement, sixty-five hundred. Okay, so, you know, it's just, it's so vague, and the type style's different. I, maybe it sounds picky on you, I don't know, but I think a budget should all be the same. It should be uniform, should all look, all look the same and provide the same amount of information. So we don't have to go, is it sixty-five hundred now, or is it going to sixty-five hundred? Well, let me go back to the other pages.
Yeah, maybe we do that.
So that's my big, major request, and then I'd like to find out why some of these huge increases are, what your methodology is. We've said before, we all thought that, or some of us thought that the budget was done backwards in the public works department.
Well, to some extent, it is.
Yeah, so I think making some of these significant ups and downs, I'd like to know why. And I don't know if we can go through each number, or just the big ones, or talk about it later.
Biggest difference is, in the public works, public works budget, basically, you have to calculate all of your expenses first, because you're covering expenses. In the other departments, you know what your fixed costs.
What your revenues to are.
For labor, and you know what your revenues are, so basically, you're operating out of that. So in one extent, it is backwards, because you have to calculate all of your expenses first, and then make sure that you're generating the revenue. That's where the rates come from, is to generate the revenue to absorb that cost, which is different than like a general fund. Of general fund departments, we know what the costs are, we know what the labor cost is gonna be.
And you're pretty sure of the revenue.
We're not establishing a rate that we've got to charge to the population, so it's a different calculation, different configuration. Public Works has to, they have to provide the service, and then they have to generate the revenue to support the service.
But the sales number's still a guess.
Sales number.
Some of it's on prior years.
Well, yeah, I mean, you have to, you have to run over a very, fairly long period of time to account for drought and non-drought cycles, and a variety of things, because it affects water and wastewater usage. I mean, it's, you know, the natural, the natural, you know, hot summer is gonna generate and require a lot more water than a wet summer. Same, same kind of operation, so yeah, in some respects, the revenue, the revenue is, this is an accounting term, it's not a wag, it's not a wild guess, basically. It's predicated on trend, is what it's predicated on.
And what the board will accept as an increase or not.
Yeah, well, and, well, that's, that's up to the board, and basically, if the board is saying, you know, when you do your calculations of all your costs, which take into a lot of things that are outside of control of, you know, the township, like utilities and, which is big, utilities and fuel and things such as that, you're estimating what those are gonna be, and then you have your rates, basically, are a product of that. They're not exact, you know, if you predict, that's why our rates appear to chase, you know, we're up and down, we're up and down, and that's been a term of discussion or a term of contention over the years, where you weigh, do we continue this on a yearly basis, or do we set an amount that's gonna be good for three years or five years? And then adjust it, whatever that term, that term is, to go up or down from that for the next three or five years, or however you do it. So I mean, there is a fair amount that's different on the public works side than in the rest of the general fund side. We know pretty much what our costs are, and that's basically driven by what we generate in taxes. That's it, that's what we have to work with, and we have to fit within that. On the other side of the coin, they're hamstrung by what it's gonna take for them to provide the service, and then they have to back into that in terms of what rate is gonna have to happen to support that, based on the predication.
Well, one big variable on, for public works is connection fees. So that's, and the big variable is the amount and type and size of development that occurs.
And you're saying you're gonna get twenty thousand dollars less?
Right, I mean, some years, you know, we've gotten as much as ninety thousand dollars. Some years, it might be ten thousand dollars.
Right, and see, if that information were in the narrative, it'd be easy to go back in your budget books and see that, or if we wanted to do that. You know it, because you just know it off the top of your head.
Or identify and.
Well, you do say in terms of all the numbers, you've basically got, every budget's got, this is when I prepared, I assume you guys get the same thing, the prior three years, and the current year up to the time of preparation.
But I think what Lynn is saying is, is if you're projecting ninety thousand dollars this year, what are you basing that on? What are you anticipating? Are you, is it that Up the Sky is gonna be starting, and therefore, we're gonna have this much? You know, so, but again, that's gonna be a prediction, you know, it's predictions in terms of what we expect to happen.
And maybe you put that, or you just say predict, whatever. I mean, twenty thousand dollars less in connections, so that says the development's not as, as big as maybe you thought last year, or we didn't meet what we had last year, so that would be part of the explanation.
Or we don't have a large development in the pipeline right now.
Yeah.
Well, and some of the narratives are longer, you know, just because.
Yeah.
You know, of.
But it isn't really an explanation of what the difference is that you're asking.
You were mentioning, I can't remember what it was, but a big change this year was water reservoirs, okay? So I knew the Chapel Ridge tank needed an interim next year code in 2020, and I was putting that on the CIP, and then you said, well, shift it to O and M. So that's what I did, so that's why, that's, that was a big jump in next year. But it's a one-year thing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we talked about that last year. Yeah, and that would be.
But what Lynn's saying is, that should've been in the narrative.
Right.
This year, we're doing, you know, this, and that's why you're seeing that increase. Yeah, I get it, I understand.
Well, it is in the narrative, that's what I'm saying. But the narrative's not next to the actual budget.
Well, I think what Lynn's saying.
And what I'm saying is, put the budget next to the narrative, so we don't have to.
Yeah, if the narrative lays all that out for each line item, basically, no change or changing this, predicated on why, you know, that, that kind of thing, then. What she's saying is, it's more of a snapshot in terms of, if there's a question I want to do, then you go back to the budget page to see how it reflects, but mainly, you're talking about a summary, budget summary.
Sure, for each change, because I do this every year, I write down my numbers of what, I, you know, pull it from the budget, and the narrative doesn't explain the change, which means we've gotta ask, and we spend a lot of time. You know, you've got an eighty-one thousand dollar decrease in sales predicted. That's significant, and it says use is variable, that doesn't tell me anything. I mean, maybe it is just a prediction, maybe it's a guess, maybe that's, I know your sales, I think, is your last number that you plug in, and maybe we just, whatever the number is, that's what we go with. And it's, you're recommending no change in the volume rate, even though there's an eighty thousand dollar difference. So the rationale, you know, is all I'm looking for, the explanation.
There is, there is some rationale, and like Kirk said, that's the reason we have, you know, you've got the schedule of what the use has done, the up and down, and up and down, and up down. You can do a trend line, basically, and it's still an estimate, basically, but it gives you a trend. I think we've got, what, over the last fifteen years, I think it was?
Yeah, flip back to the land.
Was it twenty? I can't remember what it's, do you remember, Lois, the water usage?
Uh, let's see, we have the.
The length of time that we have, how far back it goes?
Two thousand eight.
Okay, so eleven years.
I have the purchases, but that's not the use.
Yeah, well, yeah, not the use, but that's what I was looking at. But anyway, Dave, did you?
Yeah, I guess instead of going over all the individual numbers, it might, I, I know it'd help me, and I don't know if it helped the rest of the board or not, if we could get the narratives redone to reflect some explanation on the changes in the budget.
Yeah.
And then take a look at them, I think it'd be a lot easier, because we're all talking the same numbers and the same confusion. It'd just be a lot easier to, I think it'd shorten up this whole budget work session for public works by a whole lot, because I don't, once you get those explanations, you're not gonna have any questions. It's either you don't agree with it, or, okay, I see where it's coming from, fine. But I don't think we should just do it with public works, I think we should get the rest of the, the rest of the narratives changed to the same format.
Well, we always start these sessions over with the questions.
Yeah, I'm thinking of a different, different format, I've seen a format where it's basically our, our water usage. You know, you get it in your reports, basically, the monthly reports, water usage, but there was a, I can't remember whether it's fifteen or twenty years, whatever it was, we have the documentation back, and you have trend lines, you're using that.
The rates itself.
And see, we don't, we don't need that, that much information. If you took six, six oh six lateral benefit charge, there's an explanation of what it is, and if there's no change, then just say no change.
Yeah.
If there's gonna be a lateral benefit charge of a dollar, then explain where the dollar came from in a separate paragraph, and then everybody knows what the budget reflects.
So with regard to rates, you know, when you're talking about the volume rates, then you can do a trend line of the volume rates, and they would say in there, you know, why are we, why are we projecting this much? Well, because the trend line over this many years.
The fifteen-year trend says it's gonna do this, and that's where the number came from, and that's.
Right, right.
That just avoids all the question and answer period, because everybody understands it.
We used to, didn't we used to have that in the budget, Lois? I can't remember where I saw it, it was a, it was a water trend usage, the volume, the volume rates, you know, the volume amounts of usage. I know it's in their individual, you know, monthly report, but I.
Well, the rate history is here, though.
Nope.
Is that not what you're talking about?
Usage, water usage, where you see this much from purchase and this much from pump, you know, side by side, the third water source.
Wouldn't hurt to have that right next to, right after the rate history.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if there was, gone to, if we go to that kind of narrative, then you'll have that in the packet, so you can see, okay, I see over the last fifteen years, it's averaged this, and that's what we're projecting for this year, on average.
I mean, I would think that the narrative would be more, what it is here is just a summary. Just explain the change, and if you need to exchange this, or explain the change by referring you to page, the graph on page five ninety-one dash eight, then just in your narrative, refer you to five ninety-one dash eight for the, for a depiction of the change. But you don't, you don't need to present all that in part of the narrative, just, just a summary is all, everybody's looking for.
Yeah, that's all it would be, is based on trend of last fifteen years.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I actually use that kind of stuff to prepare this budget. That's just kinda double the size of the number of pages.
I don't know.
That's what you want.
You can, you can say, you can say stuff in just a few words.
I definitely agree that it's confusing to have to switch back and forth. I agree with that.
And you can put the, I can show Lois or you how I've done it, you can put the numbers underneath, or, it doesn't make any difference where, as long as.
As long as they're all the same.
As long as they're on there with an explanation of why it's changing, basically.
Yeah, I think if you apply that same logic to public works and planning, and the fire department, and just have them all review those, I think.
They all have the same, same type, style, same font, everything.
Five ninety-one fourteen, it's something similar to what I just showed you, purchases. This is a half of it, this is how much water was purchased during those various periods. Does not have pump on there as well, but there is another form that shows purchase and pump.
Yeah, the one that's in the packet.
Change your trend line to how many gallons, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that's where you're getting all that information to make those changes, it's just a summary of all that happened, it'd be nice.
Here's the water.
Bernie's hands are getting really tired over there.
A lot of my lights, you can't tell me.
The direction that you're going, I think.
Fewer tabs.
Like one question on revenue, on page five ninety-one dash seven, it says reimbursements? You're jumping up to thirty-four thousand dollars, I'm trying to figure out what that is.
I've got it, mark two.
I don't, I don't know what that thirty-four thousand dollars is, in that. You're going from three thousand to four thousand dollars, all of a sudden, you're up to thirty-four thousand. Thirty-four thousand, five ninety-one dash seven, on the revenue, it's six, six, seven, six. It's just there now. It says reimbursement for services provided by the public works department, I have a big question about it. What is it?
So there must be a big project or something coming? Yeah, I put the notes in, I got an arrow, and I put it over here, too.
The only answer is reimbursement for services that we provide, but it's not, I don't know. It takes a question.
I have no idea what it is.
Okay, I did kinda.
That would mean a direct question.
But this is it, if you come up with somebody who has some idea, otherwise, I wouldn't have to circle it and then ask the question.
Sure.
And going back to what Lynn says, trying to do it in a narrative, when you're looking at the water reserve on Northwoods at five sixty-seven, it says repair and maintenance, eighty-eight thousand. What's that? And I went back and found, it has to do with the tanks.
Yep.
So if you're doing the narrative, fine, I don't have to go any further.
How many questions it would eliminate?
You can do that.
Another question I have is on the Argo that we paid off, and now we're gonna pay off Grandview this year. Where is that money going? And that, we had talked about allocating that dollars to some other debt to bring down more and more of this debt down, and that, so these are the things that we have to watch for, because Grandview will be paid off this year, so we're talking about, I think, twenty-six thousand dollars this year. And that will go towards summer, and we as a board will have to decide with recommendations from staff as to where that dollars will go, because I felt on the board, and Dave brought this up, and it makes great sense, is that start paying down these debt as much as we can, as fast as we can. We're planning for the future development. If we have these paid off, then it's gonna be easier to go out and get loans or grants and that, because we don't have that much debt sitting on there. If we just put it into the budget, it's just gonna get spent. So if we put it back towards a debt of some type to pay it down quicker, we're gonna be better off in the long run. Whoever's sitting here is gonna be better.
As soon as we get the approved asset management program, we can earmark some of those dollars to go into infrastructure replacement.
Whatever it is, so long as we.
Yeah, just identify it.
Identify it, and as these things become paid off, we know where they're gonna go to bring down that debt, because we're gonna have debt in the future, there's no question about that. So if you keep our debt down.
Yeah, you're always gonna have debt.
So if we keep it down and keep addressing it, we're gonna be better off in the long run.
Well, it's not that we're doing anything wrong that we would have debt, it's just mostly because the projects are so huge.
Well, the problem I have is that we're spending.
So this department, anyway.
We have retained earnings, and we're, that are gaining point eight percent interest, and we're paying a loan off at three point two five percent. That's just residence money that we're giving to the bank instead of putting back into the township for something else.
Yeah, and that's why we've been doing inter-loan, inter-fund loans.
Actually, one of those, we did do that one.
Yeah, we did two.
Yeah, two of them.
Grandview and the forty acre law.
Right.
Yeah, Grandview will be paid off this year.
It already is.
Yeah, it is paid off.
That's, I mean, this fiscal year is paid off.
Yes.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
So there's no dollars allocated.
There's one other one paid off, too, this year, isn't there, what is that?
Forty, forty acres.
Forty acres.
Forty acres.
In the heart of a little settlement that's gone.
That was paid off last year.
Yep.
And that we allocated to one of the debts to try to bring it down.
Yep, there's documentation of that, there's a formal, formal document that establishes the payback at one percent.
In the, like you said, the land footage. So there are four that came off.
And I think what Lynn was talking about in. And I think what Len was talking about and Dave was talking about will really speed up the budget process in the long run.
Yep. We struggle with, and half of the discussion is flipping back and forth. And Vic, you know, you're looking at this, go to this page and find the documented, and it's just way too much.
But the one question I have on sales, recommending no change, but yet our usage.
Got a page.
Pardon?
Got a page.
One?
Five ninety-one dash one.
Okay.
On sales, it'd be under revenue, six forty-two, there's no changes in that. I don't want to pay any more money to anyone else, but looking at the monthly reports and that as to the usage of water and wastewater, it's been going down. And that, so there's got to be some point in time where we have to have a minimum amount of dollars sitting out there. And I don't know what that dollars is in that, to try and cover all our expenses into the future then. Because if we use less and less water, our expenses are not going away. They're going to still be there.
Especially if you want another person there.
That's one of the things that the board has to recognize is there is, there is a cost, basically. You may have to raise rates even though water usage is going down just to cover expenses that are going up in the other direction. And you have to provide, you have to provide the staffing, you have to provide the utilities, you have to provide all of the things that they're at demand for nothing other than fire flow. You know, so you're absolutely right, Treasure Johnson. And the reason that's happening is because conservation efforts. I mean, that's the reason it's happening. You're seeing, you're seeing the wastewater going down because more and more people are doing lawn mowing. You know, it's not, it's not going into the sewer system.
I would.
Well, that's good.
Like I say, I don't like to pay any, but if we can look at, say, two or three cents.
I was going to say five cents.
Isn't much. People aren't going to say too much if we put, raise it two or three cents a year in that. It doesn't sound like much, but over the long run, you will be gaining some dollars in that.
This is a, this is a hundred and eighty degree discussion from prior discussions about why in the world would we be raising rates if we've got a hundred thousand dollars sitting in a reserve? I mean, so.
Well, you also complained about reducing rates. You know, so.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons that we had suggested last year and I think the year before was thinking about setting a fixed rate for three years or five years. If you increase it, you know, we did one time where we did fifteen, fifteen cents, I think it was, a year over three years or four years it was, to get back up to where we needed to begin funding. Just for that reason, just to build up a fund. You know, and, but then in other years, it's the two cents, how in the world can the residents afford two more cents on their water bill? So I mean, it's, but you have to have that, the discussion that Treasure Johnson just raised. Our revenues are going to go down from usage because we are trying to conserve. We're trying to have lower flow toilets, we're trying to have, you know, cutoff showers, we're trying to have all kinds of things that draw less on water, which means our revenues go down. Costs to provide that service still go up. So you're going to have that dichotomy where John Hugh Public's going to come in and say, I used three thousand less gallons last year and I'm paying more this year. Why is that? Well, this is why. You've used three thousand less gallons and our electric rates went up thirty percent and this, it, it. So to get you that three thousand dollars, or three thousand less gallons, it costs us more money.
But I think if you put together a narrative like we're talking about, it shows where the costs are going.
Yes.
And why we have to increase it. It's a background. Whether we'll satisfy people, I don't know, but we have something to hang our hat on.
Well, folks have to, have to recognize that, I mean, there's, there's going to be more. Everybody wants electric vehicles, but as those folks don't drive, they don't drive electric vehicles, gas is going to cost more because you have fewer people buying it. So the demand is going to be higher. So, I mean, it's just that, I mean, I saw it in, let's see, what was it? I can't remember what it was, but I just saw a publication, it was yesterday, that was comparing, you know, wind generators, how great they are and everybody wants it. What does it cost to produce one wind generator? And it was something like six thousand tons of plastic, and eight, eight tons of this, and eight tons of that, that all have to be produced somewhere else using energy, transported, using energy to save what?
Your ROI is like twenty-five years.
Yeah, where's the payback? I mean, where is it really? Yes, it's nice to have a wind generator there generating some usable electricity, but what does it cost? Where's the cost benefit? And I think that's what people are losing sight of. It's just like all the folks that were flooding into meetings complaining about Eagle Mine mining nickel. Why are you mining nickel there on their cell phones and on their laptops driving their Prius, all that require nickel? So I mean, it's, you know, where, at some point, you have to just sit back and recognize, yes, it's going to cost more even though you're using less because you have to have the service.
Under that same, same status and that, I just read something on, was sent to me by a friend of mine, on electric cars. As you put more and more electric cars on the road, where is the power coming from? Can the instructure handle the additional power requirements?
And who's generating revenue for the road emissions and maintaining roads?
And there's a funny part to that. It doesn't come out of the plug in the wall. Something brings it to the plug. And it's probably coal.
Yeah, most likely. Anyway, yeah.
We're kind of off the subject now.
Well, not, not really, because it's getting to the, to the point of, you know, the clarification in the narrative. And we can do that clearly. We can have a standard format narrative that every member uses.
Because when I was, the reason I brought that up is that they were into the rate study the other day, and I was talking to one from the city. I can't think or remember her name. He mentioned that the rates in the city, the water and sewer are going to go way up.
Fifteen percent a year for the next five years, I think it is.
So I'm just trying to stay behind that curve so that we don't have to have that gigantic increase in that.
Well, and that increase is coming from not having funded infrastructure replacements in the past.
And our neighbors have all done that.
Which we're trying to do. I mean, we're trying to fund those going forward. We're trying to fund them so we don't run into that same scenario.
What I'm getting from the residents with respect to the rates going up is, is when they look at the retained earnings that are sitting there and the rates fluctuated nickel here or a dime there.
Right.
And, but we still have these retained earnings that are not, from, from anyone's perspective, if you look at that sheet, it's retained earnings, it's sitting there, you're earning less than a percent interest, and it's not earmarked for anything. It's just sitting there cash, but my rate went up a dime. If that retained earnings was explained a little bit, what it's for, and it was broken out to different accounts, whether it be contingencies or emergency reserves, whatever you want to break it out to, and it was earmarked for that, then it's explainable. And they understand why they're, it went up ten cents.
Or if it isn't, put it back in and keep the rates from increases. Popple mentioned that a bunch of times, too.
I had that very discussion with some of our residents in Walmart one day. It was exactly that question, and I think it was after, it was after one of the last budget sessions we had last year, was if you got all this money sitting in that reserve account, why are, why do we ever see a rate increase? And I said, great, I understand your question. So what you want to do is when we have to replace a water main somewhere in the township and it costs three hundred thousand dollars to replace that, you want your piece of that three hundred thousand dollars billed to you that month. Is that correct? Well, hell, no. That's why we have that fund sitting there. And she said, oh, okay, I get it. But I mean, that, but that's, that's the understanding. It's just like, you know, it's just like you're saying.
Well, and what resolves the issue is if it's, if it's not just sitting in a retained category, if it's actually earmarked for something.
Something, yeah.
So that you can say, so it's not sitting there retained. You can be earning less than a percent interest on it, but it's in an account.
But here's the problem, but here's the problem with that. To make that be viable, these guys have to have your authority to spend it whenever it's needed. Otherwise, you've got to wait for a board meeting. You can't do that. If the water main breaks, that fund's got to be tapped that day, that hour, to fix that water main. So they then have to have your authority to spend that money without coming back to the board. And that's, when you put things into line item earmarks, it's earmarked for that. And if something else happens, we don't have access to any funds.
Well, that, no, that's the whole point of us earmarking it. So that we can say, yes, we agree that this is not going to be used for this project, which goes back to the CIPs. We're going to put the money here.
Right.
An emergency should not be part of this type of budget or those monies.
But that's what.
That's the emergency fund.
But that's what retained earnings is.
Not always.
Sure is.
Not always.
Sure is. That's, that's why you have the retained earnings.
No, the retained earnings account is different. I think that's what you're talking about, Dave. The actual retained earnings account. You get through with the budget, you've got a hundred and eighty-three thousand left. It goes to retained earnings.
Right.
That's not an earmarked anything.
Well, no, but what Dave was saying is we need to earmark that money for something.
Or not.
Everything needs to be earmarked.
Yeah.
Or not.
Or not.
You need to do something with it.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, is we have these definitions, a contingency account that's, that needs to get a percentage attached to it as to how much it can be for. And we have an emergency reserve department that is, what, thirty-three percent in the general fund? Because that's what we agreed to, is four months operating. So that's where they need to be, the money needs to be set in.
Yep.
And if it's not there, then you can take whatever is left. You need to put it into an infrastructure replacement fund, or you need to take the money that's left over and just languishing out there in some bank account and use it to pay down some debt.
That's already a return of funds.
I'm, I'm just suggesting that, yes, it just shouldn't lay there without explanation.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I wish there was someplace we could put it that was getting more than point eight percent or.
Where do you get point eight?
Point oh eight, I'm sorry, point oh eight percent. You know, and, yeah, you know, we've got other funds that we're involved in that are returning almost nine percent, nine.
Well, and that's why we had it down that, that drive the loan money back to ourselves so we could actually make some money on it.
And that makes sense, I mean, because it costs us less, you know, to do that.
We've done that with the solid waste.
Yeah, a couple times. Because we have no expectation of having to spend that money anytime in the near future because it'll be a thousand years before the solid waste authority.
There's actually a couple.
I don't know, they just bought a truck out of their capital fund that they've been putting the seventy-five cents in.
That would be facetious.
I know, but I'm not. That was twenty-eight thousand they just took out of that fund.
Aren't you talking about borrowing money from our solid waste?
Solid waste, no. I was talking about the.
Our, yeah.
I thought that's what earnings are.
Yeah, we did. We had a transfer, an interloan, an interfund transfer from the general fund, from the solid waste fund that we're paying back over a thirty-year time frame.
Well, we just had a short one, too, and we had to grant two to that.
Yeah, and you did a short term loan for recreation, I think it was, wasn't it?
Whatever it was, it was twenty-six, what, a thousand or something like that?
Yeah, it was the, it was the match. It was the reimbursable match, which is the problem to get it back right now. Okay.
Well, you were talking about.
When we get done funding our emergency reserve funds and our contingency funds, and then we see what's left in that retained earnings, there's a couple more loans out there that would take a pretty good chunk of money that would save us like a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in interest.
But the problem with that, the loans are for specific projects, so they have to come out of either solid waste or come out of wastewater or water. They're in the general fund.
Yeah, no, you're restricted, you're restricted to those funds. If it's in the same fund, you know, the general fund, though, we can, you know, what Dave was saying is valid once we get to that, that emergency reserve, then basically anything else can be applied towards paying off. You know, the principal, you put it in the principal of the buildings or.
And even if you're doing it on a loan, same thing we did last time, do a loan from one department to another.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's, it's all the same thing. It's all residents' money. I mean, just putting it to work so we're making money with it.
Yeah.
Or not making money, but saving money.
Changing the financing structure.
Well, it'd be easy to sit down with the resident, and they're looking at the budget, and they want to know what this money is for. And you can say, this is thirty-three percent for emergency reserves, and this is what it's for. Instead of saying, this is three point some million dollars. And, and this is here because they want to earn point zero eight percent.
Yeah, I hear you. All right. Well, we can do all those things.
Okay.
We can revise the documents to reflect that.
You want to do the same thing with wastewater, then?
Sure.
We're talking about doing them with all of the departments.
Yeah, for now, you're saying.
For now, to get this through.
Yeah.
We have, I was looking to see if we had another budget session set up.
I think we do for Public Works, don't we?
No.
No, we didn't.
This is the last one.
So maybe we should have added that to the budget. We could, or to the budget, to the agenda.
You could just add it under.
We could add it. That's not a big, I don't like adding things to the agenda last minute, but.
What do you always do?
That's, only did once. That was once. In how many years?
You can do it every other week.
I do not.
Just do that under your supervisor's comments.
Yeah.
Because you'll report to the budget session.
CLC in the pack, my managers reported, reported that we had the last one, and this, and today was the last scheduled one, so for this.
And you can also say under supervisor comments that we need to schedule a few more, and then we can do that.
So just for information now, how quickly could you put this together? Within a couple weeks to kind of redo this with explanations? So if we schedule something Tuesday, we could do it maybe the following week?
I'd say at least probably a week, we'd be able to do the revisions we were just talking about, redo the, redo the narrative, answer some of those questions. It's pretty straightforward.
I would say the narrative, just the ones we haven't competed yet, and then go back for the future, do all the rest of it.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
So if our meeting's the fifteenth, and we could schedule another work session for the week of the twenty-first, would that give you enough time to?
October twenty-first?
Yeah. Because usually we end up scheduling in between meetings.
Okay, well, here's, here's a, I'll bring it, I was going to wait until the board meeting, but I'll bring it up now since we're talking about it. Nine oh six has to reinstall the new semantic antivirus protection. And what we're talking about doing is having all of, you turn all of your laptops and tablets have here for Sunday, the twentieth, so they can do all of the updates all at once, but you won't have access to your computers for the twenty-first.
Well, I just said the week of the twenty-first.
Oh, okay.
I don't care what day.
But again, that was something I was going to bring up afterward, so we need to kind of try and plan that. If we can get your laptops and your tablets so they can do the semantic.
I just have to sit there and bumble.
There you go. But it, it's not going to do anything to your tablets other than they have to reload the new semantic antivirus protection onto your computer. They want to do that all at once on a Sunday.
So.
The servers and all the laptops, everywhere, all the laptops and computers.
Just what I'm looking for from staff is if on the fifteenth, we ask, we put together another work session to talk about your budget, would the week of the twenty-first be too quickly for you? Because you're not going to be at the township meeting Tuesday. And I want to schedule something that's not going to give you enough time to get it done. Can you redo the narrative and put the numbers in there, and I can show you kind of roughly what I'm thinking in ten days? Is that enough?
Yeah, I might, we, I might have a template. This budget is based on a prior manager's template. And I haven't changed that.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure we got enough time.
Is ten days enough time, you think?
I think we could scramble and get it done.
Well, you're going to be on when?
The week of the twenty-first is the week of, I believe that's the same week as the asset management summits across the UP. I'd have to verify that. Of course, I haven't grabbed my phone.
Is it the total, all week?
If we could go to that following week, the last week in October, would probably be better.
That's fine.
Maybe I should grab my phone and verify what those dates are, because it's one of those two weeks.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. It just doesn't do us any good to schedule a meeting if we don't know if the stuff's going to be ready. And I think the time consuming thing would be typing up the rationale. I would think you could do that in a day, but.
Pretty much.
I don't know what's the backside of this is.
An unoccupied day.
Well, you're not talking about changing the format, you're just talking about changing a description of what the change was for.
The format just means to add the numbers, the bunch of numbers.
But to add more accounts to say no change, no change, you know, that kind of stuff.
Or if there is a change.
You want to combine the narrative with the, the actual budget, correct?
This is all.
That's what it is in the general.
The, the explanation is going to be the hardest part, but if you know what it is, this is just an example.
Well, it's the same thing that you said in your answering question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the connection permits are dropping twenty thousand. So you just put in forty thousand to twenty thousand and say, why?
Bet you want to see a big number there.
What's your rationale if it's projected?
Why do you want that connected to this?
No, I don't want any of that. This is background.
That's what we started talking about.
This is all you need to do.
It's confusing. You're switching back and.
You're switching backup.
No, no.
That, no.
This is backup.
What they want to do is they want to have the narrative be.
The narrative should tell us.
The document, basically. And then the, the budget sheets just be the backup for the narrative.
Yeah, you don't have to change that. Nothing on there will change. Just this part.
All right, but you want these connected, right?
No. They should be the same numbers. You're just going to put connection permits, forty thousand is what it was budgeted for. And it's going down twenty. And then just tell me why.
What's comprised of, what gets that?
Why, why did you drop the twenty thousand? Because the development is going to be slower this year. It's not going to pick up till next year. We have no big projects, whatever, whatever the reason is. Eighty thousand dropped in sales. Maybe you save that one till last.
So you want this over there? It's the same thing.
No. The numbers, yeah.
Yeah, you want last year's budget and this year's budget, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Line item.
Okay. That's all you're going to have to do is type eight thousand here.
So you're connecting.
We do.
Well.
And then adopt that as an increase for each of them.
Are you talking about physically connecting the spreadsheet?
Just something.
With the numbers, with the words, yes.
Yes.
Correct.
With all the.
Yeah, I didn't want them merged. I want them put together. I just want the numbers here. Just like I did, you can write them right underneath if you want or put them on the line here and then start your.
That's what.
I think you can expect.
I would propose it a little bit different than that for this.
You can either put this, move it down, yeah. Your budget, exactly.
And then imagine.
Yes, exactly.
And if we have to change the language to.
So do you two have any conflict? If we do a budget session the week of the twenty-first, then?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
It sounds like it on my calendar. See if something I missed.
The question is, will you be able to get the information done in time for the twenty-first?
John's thinking.
What's, what's the Wednesday of that week? What's the date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, just target the twenty-third?
Like, there's solid waste at four, so we'd have to do it earlier.
One o'clock.
One to three, maybe. So would that work for you guys? How's that with your work schedule?
Ten, twenty-three or one o'clock.
So we'll, I'll put that on the. No, we can't. That's what I was going to say. I'll put that on the agenda.
We'll just target. Let's hear the date again.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Wednesday, the twenty-third, one o'clock.[1685.62]